All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Second, all in favor? If you would, please rise and join us for the invocation.
Dear Lord, we want to thank you for all the blessings that we know come from you directly. We ask you to keep our community and our children safe in this holiday season as they go off to be home and celebrate with their families and keep everyone safe and travel and bring them all back to us in January, in Jesus' name. Amen.
You please remain standing and as our junior ROTC group from East Hall High School enters, if you join them in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Order, colors, march. Left. Face. Present. Colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors. Ready, cut. Right. Face. Forward. March.
Thank you very much. Please be seated.
I think we have some guests tonight, or at least I hope so, we've got a room full of people here.
We do. We have some guests that we're super excited to recognize tonight. We are going to start with a recognition of one of our very special nurses from Friendship Elementary, Joey Millwood. Our Student Services Director will kick us off on this recognition.
Good evening. I am Friendship Elementary's Principal Abby Sully, who joined me up here. She's going to explain why we're recognizing Christie Love, our school nurse. And so Abby, if you'll just come back, come up. Christie, why don't you make your way up too, please?
Abby, would you speak into the mic, please, just so people can hear? Thank you. Sure. Good evening, everybody. I am very honored to be here tonight to recognize our wonderful, wonderful nurse and all of our hero, Christie Love. She is doing her best to melt into the background right now. Because while she is perhaps the most deserving of this recognition, she is also probably the least comfortable doing so. But I really just want to tell you a little bit of a story. I'm going to set the scene here. It's just a regular day. We've got four kids in the nurse's office. I don't know why they were there, probably for a paper cut. One was probably vomiting. There was probably some sniffles. And then we've got another little guy in there who has just some general stomach pain. He's a little bit sweaty, playing soccer out at recess. He's, you know, sitting waiting in line, essentially. And I don't know how much time any of you spent in the school nurse's office, but the job is highly complicated. We are spending a lot of time, and by "we" I really mean Christie, is spending a lot of time of her day deciding if it's something serious or something simple. She approached the question last year, is that a school avoidance stomach ache, or does that child have leukemia? And he had leukemia. And she's asking herself these questions every day. And in a nurse office that's full of children with various ailments, she was looking at this little guy who's waiting in line, and he happened to just look to the side. And because she's amazing at what she does, she noticed that his carotid artery was pulsing in the side of his neck, which immediately sent her into triageful nurse mode, where she took his vitals, recognized an irregular heartbeat, called mom. Mom was there within minutes. She got him to the nearest urgent care where they transported him to the cardiac care unit at CHOA, and he was diagnosed with a blood clot on his heart. If we didn't have nurses like Christie, that child would not be here today. And he was out playing soccer on the playground this week. Because of Nurse Christie, she saved that kid's life. And I very much believe she saved our child from last year, who was diagnosed with leukemia as well, because she is incredibly attentive to every single one of our students, every single day. And we appreciate nurses like Christie. I'm grateful to have her on my team. I'm lucky to work with her every day. Thank you for taking the time to recognize and honor her.
Thank you.
Christie, every one of us is a parent way before. We're a teacher, a superintendent, or a board member. And on behalf of those of us who are parents, God bless you and thank you for what you did. Thank you.
Thank you. A real hero. Next, in our slate of recognitions, we are excited to recognize our Cohort 10.
Yes.
That sounds crazy. Our Cohort 10 of growing admin leaders. So this is a group of teacher leaders who are, have in their wheelhouse, great skill in leadership and are hopefully pursuing one day an admin role. That's near and dear to my heart. Obviously, what teachers do in the classroom really matters each and every day. But we've all heard it rises and falls on leadership, and I do believe that to the bottom of my heart. So thank you to each of you who are here tonight and who have answered that calling. Some of you are already in that role, and others of you are pursuing that. So thank you, Dave, for your leadership, and please, tell us more.
Can you click on that link? The document? I just did something by the numbers. I thought it'd be, first of all, thank you, Board, and Will, for having the vision to put this in place 10, 11 years ago. This is our 10th cohort. Pretty impressive. And as you look by the numbers, we've had 178 participants up to this point finishing up with our 10th. 18 are currently principals in our district, so almost half have been through this at that point. 36 current assistant principals and 24 in other leadership support positions, which includes instructional coaching, e-learning specialists, just different district positions along the way. The group goes through this for one year, the cohort, and they get to know each other really well. And one of the exciting pieces to it is the fact that they build relationships and professionally will travel together through their journey over the years. And it's K-12, and that's really neat as well. So it really builds the culture of our district, and they absolutely epitomize a growth mindset in regards to their learning. So I want to ask my colleagues that really do the teaching, Jennifer Westbrook, Joey Millwood, Michelle Hood couldn't be with us, and Billy Wells, to come on up at this point. And I would like for them to present their certificates to our completers.
And Dave, before you do, I just want to make it very clear, the individuals who are here tonight, you're already leaders. Some people think you have to have some sort of title or sit behind a certain desk to be a leader. You can lead from any position, and that's why you're in this cohort to begin with. So thank you for what you do. The other thing I'd say, and Dave, thank you for doing this now, 15 years. We actually started some others five years before this. But one of the most important decisions some of this group will make is they'll get a taste of it, they'll get into seeing what formal leadership looks like, and they'll say, no, thank you. Those are the smartest ones. But thank you for what you do. We value what you do, and I'll turn it back to you, but thank you.
Julie Pritchard. Matt White.
Is he supposed to do a picture?
Do you want to give individual pictures?
Yeah. Absolutely. Great. I don't know if all the board members get up there, so we're not sure. Tell them what school you're at, because these guys get pretty picky. Now, wait a minute, that's one of my... All of you get up there, that's great. Come on now.
Actually, I'm a little different. I'm a specially coordinator, so I work at Flower Branch High School, currently Chesty High School and Chesty Academy.
Craig, get you. David, why don't you get in there? Come on. Or y'all take turns. Take turns. There you go. Huh?
Lord, and all of them?
They'll each get some turns. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right. From Everwood, let's see. From Everwood Elementary, we have Karen Hayes.
Billy, you do that one. You do that one. I'll take turns.
Congratulations.
We're actually just getting out of line of the projector, so you don't have the screen showing on your head, so.
From West Hall High, Katie Eberhart. From West Hall High, Bryant Chitwood.
All right, Craig, that's enough for you now. Come on, Bo. Congratulations.
From Sardis Elementary, Darcy Fleming.
Congratulations.
Also from Sardis Elementary, Beth Johnson. From CW Davis Middle School, Jaclyn Holcomb.
Congratulations.
Mark couldn't be here tonight, but Mark DeFor from Flower Branch High School. From the DaVinci Academy at the Academies of Discovery, Jan Ewing.
Congratulations, Jen. Deb's turn.
From Spout Springs Elementary, Brittany Fields. From Cherokee Bluff High School, Tracy Parker. From Cherokee Bluff High School, Josh Herring. From Sugar Hill Elementary, Caitlin Schubert. To keep it all in the family, from Sugar Hill Elementary, Seth Schubert.
Seth, do you two know each other?
And finally, from North Hall High School, Ashley House.
And I heard Dave Moody was taking you all out for pizzas, so have a nice time.
Dave, I did, I did put on there that little presentation. Would you like to share a little bit about what that looks like?
Yeah, this would be big. We have some pictures from the capstone. Thank you for saying that.
So it's under the supporting link, if we'll click on there?
As they, as they were standing up, what he meant to say was this will be brief.
But it is pictures. There are pictures from the capstone presentations they did in the last one.
All the administrators in the district have the opportunity to see the wonderful capstone projects that each of these individuals have done. And this is a glimpse into what that looked like that day.
And the capstone projects are relevant to what's going on back at their schools and made a difference in what happens on a daily basis. They're incredible. Congratulations.
Congratulations again.
Bo, did you get a chance to go to the show? They had one last week. I did too. Frozen.
My granddaughter did.
Did she? Oh, wow. Did it go well? I heard it was great. That's awesome.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Everyone have a chance to look at that? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second, all in favor? Board operations, who's doing that?
As you can see, you've had an opportunity to talk. We've agreed who would represent the board on these various committees. And Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to recommend as a motion that these are the individuals who will represent us on these committees for the FY '26, actually for the calendar 2026 school year.
Do I have a motion to approve the appointments? Second, all in favor? All right. Policies, curriculum, and instruction. There we go.
Got it. I'm ready. Okay. So what you have before you now is policy JCDAF, the Use of Electronic Devices by Students. This is the same policy that you all have reviewed, and it's been on the table, sort of, so to speak, for the last 30 days. And so I come before you now, asking for a vote on the policy. And just as a reminder, K-8, as required by the new legislation, prohibits all electronic devices during the school day. This policy promotes that 9/12 will prohibit electronic devices during instructional time. And then it also points out that guidelines in regards to specific implementation will be available in March and will come out in our student handbook. Also, remember, we had a parent advisory group that has given us input. We have asked for input on this implementation guidelines and this policy from principals and also from students. So in order to comply with the legislation, we need to adopt this tonight so that we'll be in compliance by January.
And the policy will go into effect next school year?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adopt the policy? Second? Any other comments or questions?
We did say we'd revisit that at the end of the year, right? Because, you know, the high school policy we adopted is a little, it may give us some issues. I don't know. We'll see how it goes, but I do want us to look at it again.
Yes. And so remember, it will go into effect next year, so it will be, we'll monitor... Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Deborah, we'll also get some of our schools in that are already doing that and more, and just give you a little briefing on how that's going.
Thank you. Next, I have field trips up there. This field trip was one that you saw last meeting, and so I'm asking for approval on this field trip.
Did everybody have a chance to look it over? Do I have a motion? Second? All in favor?
Thank you. Just two other quick items that aren't on the agenda, just really announcements. One, you're going to hear more about, but we're going to have, we are in the process of relocating or really expanding, might be a better word, of our food pantry. To go right along with our mantra of Hall County is the most caring place, striving to be the most caring place on earth. We're excited to use the Johnson Annex now that Johnson is going to be moving into new facilities, gosh, next week, I think it is. Then we will have a little more room there. Matt Cox, during his section tonight, will share with you the actual layout of that. But we're going to have a standalone area there that's going to be, we're going to have extra food, we're going to have clothing and toiletries and things of that nature to serve our families and our community. So I'm super excited about that and look forward to him sharing those details with you.
And Suzanne, Matt, Aaron Turpin, Joey Millwood, I thank you for recognizing that one child going to bed hungry at night as one too many in this district, and thank you for making that a priority. Centrally located in the district, that'll be such an incredible improvement. So thank you. What other services will still be in that building once Johnson moves out?
And so other services, Aaron, really, we have nothing at this point, just some vacant space.
So what we're going to do is when Johnson moves out next week, in the next week, three fourths of the building will remain unoccupied. However, we will, we are maintaining access to the restrooms and other facilities in there that's utilized currently by Johnson Tennis.
It also is one, we're not going to rush to put anybody in. That is gold in terms of a central location that everybody can get to. So we thought, we've talked in the past about central registration, other possibilities, but it will be used, but we want to be very deliberate and intentional about that, so.
And then finally, each of you board members received a formal invitation today, your paper invitation, but we have our Teacher of the Year banquet tomorrow, which is a super exciting banquet where we get to recognize all of our Teachers of the Year who were voted by their peers as such, and then a special recognition to our District Teacher of the Year. And she'll walk away with a large check that has been made possible by the Ivestre Foundation. We continue to thank them for their support of our school and our district. That, it does it for curriculum instruction?
They not only support and fund that process, they also attend it and become a part of the event. So we thank them for being active in it.
Absolutely. Jonathan, financial reports.
Yes, sir. TAVT report is before you. Overall, solid performance for the month of November. If you have any questions, let me know.
Also, your financial report, and I was happy to see it trending as we thought it would, but even a little quicker than we'd hoped, so.
Yes, sir. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Well, and since, since he's going to give you the mini lesson, I'll give you the little bigger than the mini lesson, and that is the expenditures with 41 and 2/3% of the year completed are now down to 42 and 1,400. So we're trending in the right direction, and I would think by February, we'll actually be on the positive side, even in this tough budget year. So thank you all very much for your work.
We need to approve those.
Yes, we do. Like to recommend that you approve the financial report as presented, please.
Do I have a motion? Second? All in favor?
Cheryl here? Okay?
Oh, okay.
Once again, Cheryl, just explain to the board, because we see it, they deal with it so seldom, how we handle workers' comp up to a certain level, please.
Oh, sorry. I will have to sit on my hands to do this. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. We are presenting to you excess workers' comp. As you know, we are self-insured here in Hall County, and we have very few players in the arena of excess workers' comp. And I was so happy to see the quote come back, $3,300 less than last year. That's just not common these days. But you'll see before you there the cost for excess workers' comp for the year, policy year '26, '27, starts January 20. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I do have the privilege of serving as your risk coordinator, in addition to being Executive Director of Nutrition.
Bless you.
And I thank you. God bless you. Any questions that you might have? And we would like to get approval on that tonight so that we can get that sent over to our company.
Like to recommend the renewal of policy that you see for excess workers' comp as presented.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any other comments? All in favor?
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is technology salvage, 108 items that we would, that are the end of life for Hall County. We would like for you to declare them surplus, please.
Once again, technology. Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of those are the TVs that have become outdated that no longer talk to.
Yes, they are dumb TVs.
Okay. They're not smart TVs, they're dumb TVs. And I think last year, you allowed some of the extracurricular groups at Flower Branch to benefit from the sale of those at a gym sale. This year, it's going to be Cherokee Bluff.
Cherokee Bluff, and we will have one or two more to bring to you this year as we continue the process of replacing our hallway TVs to accommodate with units that integrate with our safety systems. So that when an alert is issued, it takes over all the audio and visual in the hallways also, so there's no space in your school where students are not notified of the issue going on.
And for those of you like Brian, who are late shoppers, of course, you may be able to pick up a really nice-looking, anyway, TV for $50. So Brian, I'd consider maybe going down there for your Christmas presents.
Does the remote come with it?
There is no remote. There are no feet. It's a TV.
Do I have a motion to call these savage? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any bids?
Jonathan, the East Blosd analysis, please.
Yes, sir, East Blosd for the month of November was just shy of about three point seven million. It is a little bit down over last year. We'll continue to watch that and let you know what happens.
Once again, so thankful for East Blosd, for the voters of this community. Can't imagine where we'd be facility-wise without it. And again, we'll be bringing to you a formal proposal next month to go to our voters again in May of two thousand twenty-six with Gainesville City Schools and Beaufort City Schools for a renewal of that one penny tax, just a continuation, which will be East Blosd seven.
Funding request.
Yes, sir, we have four funding requests tonight for consideration. This is for LED lighting for the softball field at Cherokee Bluff High School, and then stadium field lighting at East Hall High, Johnson High and West Hall High. With this project, we will have LED lighting in all of our stadiums, lighting all of our baseball fields and softball fields.
Make that in the form of a request and ask that the board would approve that.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Matt, you've had some changes in terminality with the, with our annual capital outlay applications. You want to just explain to the board about that?
Yes, sir, we, basically, they've changed the definition of our HVAC units when we apply for those. So what you see before you are revisions to both the FY twenty-six application, which included Johnson High School, Chesta T Middle and C W Davis, just basically acknowledging the change in the terminology. And then you'll see the same type of document related to the funding requests, I'm sorry, the capital outlay requests that we have in for this year for FY twenty-seven for North Hall Middle and East Hall Middle.
So if you'd restate that again, Matt, it's a name of, it's a matter of them requiring new names for certain systems for the HVACs, the change in funding?
There's no change in funding. Basically, the applications that we did indicated the units were individual unit systems, and they've changed that terminology to zoned. So it's simply a change in that, but there's no change to the funding that we receive for either of the applications.
So one time again, the change in increase or decrease in funding based on the change in how we're naming those systems?
That's all.
Zero.
Zero.
Thank you. Do they need to approve?
Do they need to be approved separately, or can we do them both together?
We'll do them together. Please, I'd ask you to approve the revisions to the FY twenty-six and twenty-seven capital outlay applications, please.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any other questions? All in favor? Site improvements.
Yes, sir, next up, just wanted to bring to board a little bit of an update on the Flowery Branch Elementary School project. As you recall, we've been kind of working on this for a while. The intent here is to make some corrections to the site layout to better handle car rider line and bus traffic on the property, and also to give them some additional space. Part of, this is part of the entire movement that we're doing on Johnson High School campus, where we're taking out the fourteen classroom modular there, splitting that up, taking part of it to Chickpea Woods, half of it Chickpea Woods, half of it here. So what you see in kind of the hatched area there in the dark block is modular building, seven classroom building, about six thousand square feet. And then the rest of it, if we go to the next drawing, I think we can.
Matt, tell us where that building is coming from, by the way?
That's coming from Johnson High School.
So when the Johnson High School move is complete over the next month, the modular that has served them for the last seven years, half of it will be moved to Flowery Branch Elementary to accommodate the growth that we've had in that area of elementary students.
So what you see here is the intended final plan. So to your right, the right-hand side there, you see Radford Road. The top driveway would be the car rider lines, we're kind of reversing things for the school. So essentially, they come in there, there's two lanes of stacking. We go back to this kind of a teardrop loop and then come back to the front, to the front entrance with car rider traffic. Bus traffic would be off of the other driveway utilizing the service drive, and we kind of swing that a little bit closer to the building. So the changes should help them bring a lot of traffic off the road and onto the campus to clear up the road pathways, and also give them just a little bit more parking and better coverage. All of the pink that you see there are canopies, so we have an extended bus canopy, a lot of extension of the car rider canopy, so this should make them very efficient in their morning and afternoon.
If we could advance to slide four, that gives them a much better idea. And this would be a picture on slide four, actually facing to the north. You'd be facing from Radford Road. You see the wraparound canopy there, which is going to have an incredible positive effect in terms of the amount of time it takes to unload and load car riders. And again, you see the separation just to the west of that. You see three buses. Buses will come in and leave a different entrance, as we like to try to do at all of our schools. And you see the queuing line that Matt and his engineers have created on the right, getting people off of Radford Road. So he'll be glad to answer any questions.
The queuing line, will we have lights and possibly security cameras on those?
We will have, we'll have lights. We need to talk about cameras.
We need to talk about cameras, yeah.
And the reason I ask that is just to the right of that is the ballfields for the park. So I'm sure they'll be parking there to walk up the hill to the ballfield.
Great point. Thank you. Great, if no questions, the next item we have is related to this project also, which is our CM at Risk recommendation. We had the two responders, the information is provided, there's our scoring sheet, and also our compensation summary. And the recommendation is for Carol Daniel Construction.
And Matt, real pleased to see two quality contractors on a project that we're putting out there. This Lake Grail is our Athens folks that we think a lot of.
Yes, sir.
Correct? So we would like to recommend that we approve Carol Daniel Construction for this CM at Risk at Flowery Branch Elementary Site Improvement Project.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any other questions? All in favor?
Next up, we have project updates for the three primary projects that we have under construction. First off is Word Language Academy. We are, things are moving along very well there. We have steel going up now, so you can begin to see the shape of the building. The slab's poured of the main level. Also beginning to do some framing of second floor. The, want to also remind the board of the beam signing that we'll have there. The steel's going to go up pretty quickly, so by February we'll have all the steel up. We've scheduled a beam signing for January twenty-ninth at three-thirty on the property. This is just an opportunity for staff to come onto the site to kind of experience where they're going to be and to sign, put best wishes on the beam. Beam will be placed over the main entrance, similar to the way it was done at Everwood. So every child that passes through will go under the beam. Next up is North Hall High School. North Hall's moving more into finished stage. We've, we now have HVAC operational. You begin to see ceilings and lights going in, some of our finished items as we continue to go. There's still a long way to go, it's a big building. So this, there's still quite a bit of work to do, but we are well on schedule to be ready for turnover this fall, next fall, fall of twenty-six. And lastly, Johnson High School. Johnson is finishing up, essentially complete. We're going through punch lists now. You see there the new practice gym, the before and after of that. Of course, the other building's gone, but you know the old building, and this is going to give them so much more versatility to have that auxiliary gym available for them. The three-story building is in good shape, and we'll begin that process. This will be our first time doing a mid-year transition, but we are well on schedule. We've done a lot of work with the school, and we are well on schedule to transition into the school such that the kids will be in the new building when they come back from winter break.
I guess with the weather we've had recently, we tested that drain in between the two buildings there.
We've tested it.
And Erin, would it be safe to say that the Knights are excited about getting into their new space?
The Knights are very excited to be under one roof. So much better, no walking in the rain, much more secure environment. They're very excited to be under one roof, yes.
When we finish Johnson and North Hall, we'll have all our schools under one roof now, won't we? You'll be able to access all the buildings from one, from under the roof, including East Hall. It's a decent walk, but.
You can get everywhere at East Hall under some kind of cover.
Stay inside the building.
I think North still walks through a little rain, getting out maybe just to the physical training area.
Yeah, I think, I think east the CTA wing, is that not still under, yeah, it's under canopy still.
So if you don't ever want to get wet, you don't take metal fabrication.
But they are, those buildings are pretty centrally located in our secure area, though.
Is there a pit in one of the new rooms?
It's still in the, in the courtyards, I think, Brian.
There is one in the courtyard.
There's a pit in the courtyard.
So you still have a pit? All right, personnel.
One more food pantry.
I thought we just went through that, but.
By the way, what you're looking at here, just to orient yourself, if you know where the tennis courts are at Johnson High School, probably the most utilized metal building we've had in this district over the last thirty years has been what has been affectionately called the Annex. This is the western corridor of that Annex, which will serve as a central food pantry instead of the numbers that we have at different locations throughout the district.
So the image that you see here, as Erin mentioned, is about a quarter of the building. So if you're, if you pull onto the property and you're facing the building, this would be the left-hand end of the end closest to Robert Wood Johnson Drive. What we're planning to do is take over that end exit, those end-exit doors and close that hallway. And basically, this project is a lot more demolition than it is construction. So what you're seeing is us kind of just taking out a lot of the extra walls there that created a couple of classrooms and some offices, and developing this into one place for the food pantry and clothing distribution to happen at the same place. We've retained some existing restrooms that are there and existing office and conference space for staff use.
Joey, if you'll kind of give us some more information about this, please, sir?
We, our food pantry's been in existence for three, well, since two thousand twenty-three. We've been housed at Lyman Hall Elementary School in two large, it's a large double classroom. But in the last two years, we've distributed almost eighty-eight thousand pounds of food from that, from that area. It's, has served its purpose, but our need has grown. And so we've been partnering with North Georgia Food Bank, Atlanta Food Bank, Ingalls. The Junior League does fundraising for us. And so what this does is it gives us an opportunity to expand that. We also have had donations of clothing. We had a grant for additional clothing and hygiene items over the last two years, but those have been stored in our upstairs at Student Services. And our social workers are primarily the ones who distribute that. And so it does create an issue as far as serving families and getting, getting the information, getting all the materials first to take out to homes. By having it at a centralized location, it helps us to consolidate and expand as well as return the needed classroom space at Lyman Hall Elementary.
Thanks, Joey, and this project will be a trade and trading project.
Dr. Schwafer, personnel.
Yes, sir, you have the Personnel Action Items in front of you this evening, and I sent that to you on Friday. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
If not, I'd like to recommend the Personnel Packet be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor? All right, we do have board training after citizens' input, so y'all are welcome to stay for that. But now we have time for citizens' input. Larry? Is Larry still here? All right, Susan?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I just had a quick question. I'd like a little clarification on how the food pantry works, how the students are chosen, how the food would get from Johnson to the various students, just in general. And just a little explanation about that, because I'm not familiar with it. I would appreciate that, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas to you, Susan. And Joy certainly would be happy to talk with you after the meeting and tell you how all that works, but there's, thank you.
Jody? And Frank?
I wrote myself a note, turn on the mic.
This is from a website called The Cooldown. At both the north and south poles, ice is rapidly melting. Researchers emphasize that this isn't just an issue impacting the Arctic Ocean and the region, with even equatorial nations like Indonesia feeling the effects. As the Russian International Affairs Council reported, new data from the National Snow and Ice Data Center showed that Arctic sea ice is dwindling by about twenty-seven thousand square miles annually. This creates problems for island nations near the equator, such as Indonesia, which is facing rising sea levels as ice melts. As a result, researchers predicted that approximately one hundred and eighteen thousand hectares, and a hectare is two point four acres, hectare is a metric measure, of Indonesian land will be flooded by two thousand fifty. The report also highlighted how melting Arctic ice may disrupt the El Nino, La Nino cycle. Such a disruption can lead to heavier rainfall and more severe droughts. It's proven to cause unpredictable weather patterns, threatening agricultural production and food security. Wherever you live, you can help curb Arctic melting by living a low-impact, energy-efficient lifestyle and setting a sustainable example for others to follow. Installing solar panels is one of the best upgrades to save money on utility bills. This is from Scientific Reports. New research warns that African forests, once vital allies in the fight against climate change, have turned from a carbon sink into a carbon source. A new international study published in Scientific Reports and led by researchers at the National Center for Earth Observation at the University of Lancaster, Sheffield and Edinburgh, reveals that Africa's forests, which have long absorbed carbon dioxide from the atmosphere, are now releasing more carbon than they remove. And this is closer to home from the Gainesville Times. Two weeks ago, NOAA announced that two species of coral reefs in Florida have become extinct. This occurred in two thousand twenty-three, when the coral was obliterated by the hottest year on record in a hundred and thirty years. Ninety-seven percent of these coral species off the Florida Keys are now dead or dying. Florida's reef system is the only one in the continental United States and generates more than thirteen billion dollars in revenue each year. An important function of coral reefs is to reduce wave intensity, preserving sand on beaches. More than half of the beaches in Florida show signs of erosion. This is an environmental emergency that could spread statewide. Hotter oceans mean dying coral. That can only be reversed with a nationwide commitment to reduce carbon emissions. I'll remind you again that if you're not, are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem. You don't seem like you're responsible people, but the evidence indicates that you are. You must act wisely.
Merry Christmas, Frank.
No, not unless you conspire.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we have. Cheryl and her team have prepared a meal for you. We do have training coming up in terms of facility planning and some of the elements of a ten-year facility plan. and some of the elements of a ten-year facility plan. Deb, would you mind saying grace for our dinner?